This conference will now be recorded.
That, uh, Bill, I'm really excited to talk about that. I think everyone will find it interesting. And yes, I'd like to introduce Brendan Welcey from the Osable River Association, who is going to address the village board with respect to the recent 2019 water quality report. And I think maybe he will have some other news for us as well. So Brendan, you have the, you have the floor.
Great. Craig, can everyone hear me all right?
It might be better if everybody muted theirselves if they can until they're going to talk because there's a lot of feedback.
Same complaint. All right, great. So I'm going to try and go through this really quick. I'm just going to present the results from our 2019 water quality report. And then at the end, just to address a request for support for 2020 from the village. I don't know that the, I presented this to the trustees in the past, but we got permission from the village last year to operate a motorboat on the lake for a day to do an updated bathometric map. So a map of the lake bottom. We completed that on a really cold rainy day in May. And this is the updated map. There's not anything horribly revealing in here, but there's a lot more detail than what we had in the past from New York State DC, especially this little basin on the south end near the beach and some of these shallow areas up near the north end of the lake. So if anyone wants a copy of this or has any use for it, I'd be happy to provide a digital version to anyone for any type of use. Hitting the highlights on our report, we continue to see no long-term change in productivity of the lake. And one of the primary ways we look at that is the amount of phosphorus in the lake. So this figure on the left is the phosphorus concentrations at the surface, which are the, the black points. You can see that it's pretty much flat from the seventies through today. The gray points show the bottom of the lake, which are, is higher. And I'll, I'll talk about that in just a second. We look in within 2019, we see again, the surface is low and consistent throughout the year. But we do see the bottom water rise quite a bit throughout the, the latter half of the year. And this is an artifact of the, the fact that the lake isn't turning over in the springtime. So as, as a result of the lack of turnover, we have very low oxygen at the bottom of the lake. That low oxygen results in phosphorus being leached out of the sediments at the bottom of the lake and into the water above. And so this is one of the things that makes the lake more vulnerable to an algal bloom or harmful algal. We, we would like to see these concentrations at the bottom stay flat throughout the entire season. And they would if the lake was better oxygenated and mixed. Um, we documented for years a long-term increase in calcium. This is mostly good news and it, but it's probably the result of the salt, which some of, some forms of salt have calcium in them. The salt can also push calcium out of the soil into the lake. But more than likely, the slightly elevated concentrations are of calcium are the results of the crushed limestone beach that Peter and his family have at the Golden Arrow. Calcium's beneficial to lakes in most instances. The only thing that we sort of keep an eye on is once we get above around 12 to 15 milligrams per liter of calcium, if zebra mussels were ever accidentally introduced to the lake, they'd be more likely to establish. Right now, even if they were introduced, it would be very unlikely that we'd see a big population of zebra mussels established in the lake because of the calcium concentrations are too low. For the first time, we also documented a statistically significant increase in pH. And again, this is good news for the lake. And this is likely a combination of the recovery from acid deposition that we're still seeing and is going on in the Adirondacks, as well as that increase in calcium and that crushed limestone acts as a buffer for the lake. And so we're seeing the pH concentrations come up slightly. And for the chloride, which is basically how we measure salt in the lake, we see that long-term increase in chloride concentrations. In the early seventies, we were at four milligrams per liter. Today we're at about 40 and the bottom is much higher. If we look within 2019, we see elevated chloride in the lake bottom, starting right off the beginning of the year, and it stays that elevated until the lake turns over in the fall, at which point the surface and the bottom become equal in their concentration. If we look at the chloride in a bit more detail, so this is a figure that has a lot of data behind it. But the way you read this is the top of the figure is the top of the lake. The bottom of the figure is the bottom of the lake. And we're going from May 2015 right up through last week. And the color that you see corresponds to the concentration of chloride at that particular depth in time. And so the pattern that we've been observing in Mirror Lake pretty consistently is in the winter time, we see elevated concentrations form at the lake bottom. 2016, it wasn't that severe, but in 2017, 18 and 19, we saw these really high concentrations at the lake bottom. And in 2019, between February and March, we saw the highest concentrations that we've measured to date. The black line shows the total amount of salt in the lake. So you see this build up in the winter and then the lake flushes throughout the rest of the year, builds up, flushes, builds up, flushes. So the bad news is 2019 was the highest total amount of salt in the lake and the highest concentrations at the lake bottom. The good news is that 2020 is quite a bit different, lower concentrations at the lake bottom, not as much salt built up in the lake overall. And we did see the lake turn over last week. And that's a combination of the salt reduction efforts, I think, that everyone has been putting forth in the community, including the village, as well as we had a mild winter and the ice went out on the lake several weeks earlier than what is normal. So it's given the lake a lot of opportunity to turn over and mix. The turnover is really important to the amount of oxygen that's in the water column. So these, this chart is read the same way. The red is areas at the lake bottom that are very low in oxygen. So if you go to 2016, we see that the lake mixed in 2016 as well in the spring. We see high concentrations top to bottom. And then after July, we start to see low oxygen at the lake bottom. So this is probably sort of what is typical for Mirror Lake. If you look at 2017, 18 and 19, we see low oxygen coming out of the winter. The bottom doesn't get re-oxygenated. So we have this longer period of time of low oxygen and that that's what releases phosphorus into the water above, limits habitat for fish and other organisms. So, and you can barely see it here. And just last week, we do have, and I was actually out today, but I didn't, didn't update this with the data from today. But we have high oxygen concentrations from the top to bottom this spring. And that's the first time we've seen that since 2016. And then I just want to briefly give a overview of the grant that we're working on that was funded by the Lake Champlain Basin Program and the village has been participating in. That grant really is trying to answer the question, how much salt do we need to reduce in order to restore turnover in Mirror Lake and protect it in the long term? And the really key piece of information that we're, we need that we don't have is how much salt is being applied to the watershed. And so we're looking at all sources of salt. In December, the village had one of their plow trucks set up with a AVL equipment, which allows the highway department, as well as, as us as part of this research, see where the plow trucks are and how much material is coming out of the back of the truck. So this is just a sort of a review of a storm event in December. And you can see the village truck going around, doing its thing throughout that storm event. And this, we hope will be beneficial to Brad and the highway department and giving them a view of their operation that, you know, they really have never had before. And I know that in conversations with Brad, he's particularly interested in getting the sidewalk sweeper set up. And so we hope to have a total of four vehicles going into next season with this technology on them. Two village plow trucks, the sidewalk sweeper, and then the town plow truck. And then if, where this is really useful is we can look at the amount of material that's come out of these vehicle, out of the plow truck. And so this, there's no scale on this. This isn't, you know, meant to be any sort of analysis of any, of the data because we really didn't collect too much this season. It was really about getting all of this up and running. But we can see where more material, so the red areas received more material on the storm event and the lighter areas received less. And this gives us the information we need to identify the amount of salt that's making it into the lake. It also gives us information on how much salt is coming out of particular stormwater outlets and where we might focus stormwater improvements and other best management practices. And it also, you know, might give Brad and his crew some insight into, well, if we could maintain some of these sections of road here with lower amounts of material, how do we then, you know, scale that across, you know, the rest of the roads that are being maintained? And then we installed one roadside camera. And I will give a lot of credit to the village crew. The Phil, who are the contractor we're working with on this, said that, I think I might get his name wrong, but maybe Tyler in the highway department, village highway department was the most skilled person they've ever worked with. And they've worked with highway departments across the country doing this sort of work. And with their enthusiasm, not only did they get one plow set up in a day, but they also got this camera installed. And so this allows the, you know, to couple that data from the plow trucks with how the road responds. So this is in the middle of a storm in March. This is before, I think the plow had gone by once earlier in the evening. This is at six in the morning. Then it went by at 7:30 and you can see the recovery of the road surface in response to that treatment, as well as the air temperature. And so this is where, as if the village starts playing with, how do we vary our, our management of the roads? We can, you know, this will give you an opportunity to see, well, how did the road respond? Are we getting recovery to bear pavement that we expect and providing that service that the public is expecting on the roadways? The other component of this is we know that the, you know, the, the town and village are just a small part of the bigger picture in the Mirror Lake watershed. And so we are going to be surveying all of the residents and businesses within the watershed to find out how much salt they're using. We're not going to have the level of detail that we'll have with the municipalities and the state, but it'll give us the overall picture of what's going on in the watershed. We'll be doing more stormwater monitoring and we're excited to have this span some of the construction that's being done on Main Street so we can really document the improvements to the lake and the stormwater that that's going to bring to the village. And then we're, this in June will be building out a continuous monitoring network in the Chub River watershed. We have two stations right now and one off of Averyville Road and one at the outlet of the Chub. We'll be installing stations at the inlet and outlet of Mirror Lake and the outlet of Lake Placid. And these will measure the amount of salt that's coming through these water bodies every half an hour continuously all year long. And then we're continuing our, our bi-weekly monitoring of the lake, which goes on year round, only interrupted when the ice isn't safe to walk on. And then we have partnered with RPI to install a permanent buoy in the lake. And I want to thank the trustees and the mayor for approving that. A few weeks ago, the deployment is delayed until it's safe for us and our colleagues to be in a boat together to put it out there. But this will have a string of data loggers on it, also recording data every half an hour on the lake all year long. And the, the plan is for this to get frozen in place and it'll be one of few lakes in this part of the world that have a continuous monitoring buoy deployed in the wintertime. So I just want to thank everyone that's supported this work over the years, especially the village and the town. And I'll end just by saying it, we also included a, a letter from our board chair and Bill Billerman, who I believe is on the call here tonight, requesting funding and the next budget for the village of $10,000. And that's to help us meet the match requirements that we have through this grant for the Lake Champlain Basin Program. And it would specifically support the monitoring work that's been going on on Mirror Lake. And we've requested the town make a contribution of $5,000 in their next budget year. And that's scaled proportionally to the amount of the lake shore that the, that falls across the village and the town. So with that, if, if there's time for questions and anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Brendan, for the update on the report. There's a lot of information in this document and it's certainly available for anybody that wants to read it. It's very detailed. The, the request for funding, it comes at a good time for the village. We're just at the front end of beginning to develop our 2020, 21 budget. And we'll, we'll take your letter of request under advisement appropriately. And I think, I think it most likely will see support, given the fact that we have been, I think consistently supporting financially the activities to try to, to try to reach a point where Mirror Lake clearly is, is performing in the manner that it should. We all recognize that it's a, a center of recreation, it's a center for the village. And I often refer to it as the crown jewel of the village. And we certainly want to maintain the integrity of that water for everybody's benefit. Bill, Billerman, I know you're, you're on. Do you have any comments to add from the Mirror Lake Watershed Association?
Hold on, let me try to, okay, Bill's unmuted.
Bill? Well, the, the Mirror Lake Watershed Association fully supports the Osable River Association's efforts to quantify and lead us in the right direction as far as where we're going with reducing the road salt on our roads and our sidewalks. We also support financially, part of our funding goes towards the Osable River Association to help them with the monitoring. And I would, you know, I'd like to see us continue and make that commitment for the next three years because it is a three-year project for the Osable River Association as part of their grant. So we fully support that. We hope that the village would be, and the town will be willing to fund the $10,000 for the village and the $5,000 for the town to move forward and to actually make the commitment now in the next few months so that the Osable River Association knows where their funding is coming from. It also, in this time of economic downturn, it's really important because I know that nonprofits are going to be the ones that are going, not going to be supported as they had in the, in the past. So to make the commitment and to make it for three years would be valuable for keeping the monitoring going. So I would hope that the, the village and the town would consider that for the next three years also, as they consider their budgets coming up and to make the commitment. And I think we are very fortunate to have someone like Brendan, who has stepped up with the Osable, with the Watershed Institute of Paul Smiths to start this in 2016 and 2015 and to move it forward so that we now know where we are now and where we want to be. So we're, I think we're fortunate to have this in our community.
Thank you, Bill. Are there any of the trustees that have questions or comments?
Yeah, Brendan, I've got a couple of questions. You mentioned that the village has a tracker on its vehicle and that you're going to be putting more on the village and one on the town. What about the state?
This, vehicles are, all have the same technology. We are, it's, it's sort of interesting. We sit on the strategic working group that oversees the pilot along 86. We have a charter with the state that involves us and our partner organizations and encourages the open sharing of information. To date, the state has not shared their application data for the 86 corridor. Our plan and the plan of at least one of our other partners is to submit a FOIL of requests to the state to get that data. So in conversations with folks at DOT, I think that is sort of the process that we're going to have to go through because of some of the litigation that has been pointed in the state's direction over the last few years. So we, we expect we'll get the data. We're just not getting it in the collaborative manner that we hoped it would be provided.
Okay, thank you. And also I thought it was interesting, if I read your chart right, where salt was put down, it looked like Hayes Street and Marcy were not in your high salt usage zone. Is that correct? They're the feeders that come down onto Main Street, the two hills?
Yeah, so that was data for one day, for one truck. And, you know, I'm sure Brad or Peter might be able to speak more to this. My understanding is there's another vehicle that does those streets, a smaller truck. So, and that's why we're, the, the plan is to have three of the village's vehicles and one of the town's vehicles. And that gives every, and then the state, when we get the data from them, that gives us all of the application data for the Mirror Lake watershed. Right now, we just, this winter was just really getting a feel for the technology and the maintenance and installation of it.
Okay, and then my last question, as you mentioned, the Golden Arrow Beach and the calcium, I couldn't tell if you thought it was a good or a bad thing. And if it is a bad thing, what could be done about it? Does it have to be dredged up or could it just be covered to keep it underneath, say, a new layer of sand? Or what are you recommending there?
Um, I don't think it's a bad thing. It is, many lakes in the Adirondacks are experiencing calcium decline because of a legacy of acid deposition. And that, if the calcium drops too low, a lot of the organisms that live in lakes depend on it to build their body. We need calcium for our bones. And the zooplankton need it for their exoskeletons and the fish need it. So the beaches overall probably have positive contribution to the lake. The only thing that we're keeping an eye on is if we go too high with the calcium, it's not going to hurt the lake. It just makes the lake more vulnerable to some types of invasive species. So, you know, if we get to that point, then we can have the conversation, but we're not there right now.
Okay, great, thank you. And I also commend you for the work you do as well. Thank you.
Any other trustees with comments or questions? Well, Brendan, well, Brendan, still with us.
Brendan, this is Peter. Can you, as part of your research, see if there's a correlation between winter degree days and the quality of the lake in relation to salt? In short, I think Mindy has all that information going back, the logging department does, to see if there is, was a warm winter and one would think less salt and therefore better quality. Is it that simple?
It is, that's what we saw in 20, the winter of 2015, 16 was 30% below normal snowfall for Lake Placid. I haven't looked at the numbers for this year, but I think we all just experienced it. It was a mild winter. And so we wanted to see the salt reduction come down to the point where we get the lake turning over even on a more normal winter. But we installed a weather station adjacent to the lake on the Lucy property on the east side of the lake two years ago now. And so that's giving us really local data that will, that will pair with the, with the application data that we're getting from the town, village and state. And then, yeah, we're certainly, we'd be interested in looking at more historical data for the lake as well. But I do think it's that simple.
Thanks, Brendan. Brendan, this is Jason. So the ultimate goal is to have three village trucks, you had mentioned in one town, to be able to generate those maps that you had showed from the route to, to the distribution of salt slash sand. Because I found that to be probably the most enlightening part of the whole entire process. That was information that was just, it was more hearsay or anecdotal, but to actually see it in a map and within, in a context with different colors as far as heat zones, I think that's amazing. So that's the ultimate goal with the funding.
Yeah, and for individual parcels of private and commercial land that would, would basically just get colored, whatever we generate from purchase order records and survey responses. The end goal is to know the amount of salt that's applied. That gives us the information we need to say, here's how much we need to reduce to, to improve the condition of Mirror Lake to a point that we're all happy with. And then we can then look at what everyone's doing and say, maybe the village, we're only going to get 5%. You know, we do everything we can and the village can only come down 5%. You know, the state might be able to come down 30 or 40, but what's the reality of that? And then, but maybe, I think parking lots and sidewalks are where we're really going to be able to see a lot of savings. And so, you know, then we can strategize, how, where can we get the reductions? How much is everyone putting down and who do we think we can really, you know, save a lot with? And I know, again, that, you know, we've been working with Peter's family, the Golden Arrow, and it's like, they're not, there's really nothing they can do to use less salt on their property. But we know there's other properties that, that could see a lot of savings. So that's really the end goal is, is to have a, a strategy on how we do this.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the trustees? If not, Brendan, we'll, we'll take your funding request under advisement as we fill this coming year's budget and express our appreciation for the work that you've been doing, the relationship that's developed between our watershed partners and the village. It's certainly leading us to results that I think we're all hopeful are going to continue to get better. With that said, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, our, our next presentation is, is coming to us courtesy of MJ Lawrence and Jim McKennan from Roost. And it's going to focus on the current situations with respect to our community, the coronavirus impacts that it's having, and I think directions as, as to the plan for moving the village and moving Lake Placid, or actually the region. Jim, MJ?
Oops, Jim, sorry. Jim, are you unmuted?
I'm unmuted now. Thank you, Mayor. And yes, you know, we've got, we're going to run through a number of things here this afternoon as quickly as we can and certainly available for questions at any time. You know, we're entering pretty close to two months of sort of the pause or shutdown. And what we're, we've been mainly working on is how do we communicate with our communities? How do we communicate with the traveler? And how do we put it all under public health? So we're going to run through a quick presentation that we did actually two weeks ago. I think we're getting close to two weeks ago on the, on what we're doing and the four steps or stages we've identified. So let's move right on. on the, on what we've doing and the four steps or stages we've identified. So let's move right on MJ. So we've identified four single stages, uh, from business as usual where we were to mitigation, which we're still in that stage, uh, and how we're planning. We see the next phase is local kickstart, followed by regional movement, followed by the new reinvented travel market, and it will be reinvented. Let's move on MJ. The mitigation, what we've tried to do is we've paused all our paid advertising. And we've been encouraging travelers that would traditionally travel here to stay home. Uh, and at the same time, we've tried to keep the top of mind awareness of our, of, of our areas there with the traveler for the future and really trying to plan and how to position for the reemergence of the travel market. It's the message we've been putting out there has been, we'll be here, we will be here. And we hope that you all are glad at staying home and share, uh, and we tried to share Adirondack moments with them and really start keeping consistent with the message that we were not encouraging travel and we're still in that mitigation stage. The next stage we see, and we don't really know the timing on this. Certainly, May 15th is a, is the time that the governor's office is now working on. How things will roll out in the travel industry after that is still a little bit uncertain. But we know after May 15th, we, at least we think that some of our businesses will start to reopen. And when that happens, we have to concentrate on the local communities because they're going to be the first ones to get out and start going back to our businesses. And it will probably be a different environment, how, how they'll do it. We'll also have to really understand that there's going to be some local sentiment that is travelers or events, the right thing to come at this time. So we have, we have sort of a, a two, two-tier approach that we have to work with at all the time. So in the local kickstart, it's really about activating the, the local community, getting them out and about in the businesses. And it gives us an opportunity, that's the time where we should refresh and clean up. Um, and you know, we're talking things like we've been encouraging people to expand their flowers, start identifying hand sanitizing stations. And really understand that business activity moving forward is going to be different than what we've been used to in the past. And we have to do it in a way that first we touch the local community and really get them to understand what's going to be necessary because we do need to be in a position where our businesses start to get some economic activity again. Because the further we go along this path, the more challenging it will be for some of our businesses to come back. So the local kickstart, we feel is probably the most important and we, we'll get into a little more of that in a, in a little bit. So next slide, please.
We're going to skip that, but basically the messaging at the local kickstart is we are here and that is, you know, really talking to your friends and families and your neighbors about moving around locally once the time is right.
Correct. And the regional movement is when we'll start to see travel sentiment. And most of the research that we track is saying that areas like Lake Placid and the rest of the Adirondacks, when things do start opening up and the right processes and protocols are in place, the drive to destinations are more likely to see some activity. So we're going to be preparing for that and we certainly know.
Interrupt to say through, there's no timeframe on any of these phases, but I know Jim said this, but I really think it's so important that we reiterate that the safety and health of our communities, community in this case in Lake Placid is first and foremost, and that will be working very closely as well with our public health organizations and Adirondack health to make sure, obviously with the state and county direction, but I just don't want to lose sight of that.
Some of the things that we've been talking to our businesses about is that discretionary income will certainly be lower. And things like rates that we might have seen in past summers probably will be harder to attain. And businesses have to develop more flexibility, meaning that things like cancellations and refunds, to be successful, we have to understand that the traveler is looking at things quite differently right now. And we have to be ready to deal with this new traveler as it comes online. And that rule, we, we thought during this phase, we hope to get to the point where we can uh, start reaching out to travelers to come back. And the message we're going to be saying at that time is clearly that we are open. And again, that regional movement is the time that we don't really know what that timing will be at this time.
And also, Jim, you know, through all of these different phases, you know, from the local kickstart to the regional movement, the sanitation and the cleanliness protocols are going to be top of mind for our local community members as well as the traveler. So really being out in front of that, and Jim mentioned, you know, sanitizer stations, messaging to the traveler before they enter a business or lodging property, a retail restaurant, what that messaging would look like in a friendly and professional way. So that there's one message out there, um, you know, of the proper protocol. And then as well as helping the, and we'll get into this a little bit more, but to helping the local businesses on the best protocols and practices for them to open up safely for their employees as well as to start generating some of that, you know, revenues again.
And there'll be, you know, for each sector, there'll sort of be different programs that we're going to get engaged in, whether it's retail, restaurant, lodging or others. There'll be certain protocols that we're going to help people understand and then help, we hope to help get them to get the necessary materials that, that they can do. Because it's going to be a new travel market. It's not going to be what we have been historically been accustomed to. Uh, and it's going to really be up to us to help figure that out for the businesses and then get there with the traveler as well. So when we say it's a reinvented travel market, it clearly is. The types of messaging we will certainly do, uh, certainly the social media and, you know, content development and we'll do some paid media we planned. But the whole phase is really getting us from mitigation in the proper way. As MJ said, working with our public health authorities, our medical facilities, our county and our state to make sure that we're getting the right protocols in place for our businesses to position us best to start getting a rebound. So in a summary, that's the four stages we've identified without timelines. Another thing that we've developed is a, is a, what we're calling a toolkit for our businesses partners. And why don't you run through that MJ?
So again, we think that it's really important, um, you know, that as a community, that we're all sending out a similar message and talking the same, um, the same thing at the same time. So obviously now we're pause now, play later, you know, hashtag Adirondack moment. So it's more um, about dreaming of the Adirondacks and Lake Placid, but staying home. And so in this mitigation phase, we've given, we've created a toolkit, which is a social media best practices, which I can show you, you know, some of those. Can everybody see the screen? So this is just the, you know, an overall.
Can you make it full screen?
What's that?
Make it full screen.
Yeah, don't. Remember what you're dealing with here. So, you know, and this is just tips for engaging the audience, be a resource to your clients and customers. And then the hashtags, if we're all using the same hashtags, then it, it just makes it one larger message being pushed out to a, a larger group of people. Clients, customers, travelers. And then we're also shared photo assets as well as video assets. Whoops, sorry. This is where things go bad. And then, you know, again, therefore here's the Lake Placid asset so that the businesses can download images and videos to use to help promote their businesses.
On the taglines and the information we're putting out there.
Correct. Another initiative that we're working on for our local community is an online shopping platform. So that's to help businesses that have the ability to, um, offer online shopping to the customer to start pushing that out to over 150 plus thousand emails that we have in our database. So we're currently working on that and that will be launching a week from this Wednesday. And again, it's going to be Adirondack, you know, bring a little bit of the Adirondacks to your home. And that again, will just be an online shopping platform. So anybody that, any businesses and retails that offer that, we're going to help promote them in just another way to hopefully generate some revenue.
And we're also going to be initiating some programs. One is called Adirondack Wayfinder, which will be sort of self-guided tours that families, individuals can do, staying in their own cars. And we're really encouraging our business community to start looking at things by the family. What can they do for single families? So those are some other areas that we're concentrating on. So that's.
We're going to talk about the supporting other things that we're doing to support the communities, community, um, you know, during this mitigation phase. We have bimonthly calls with, um, the last one, we have them every two weeks, bimonthly. We had over 200, just 200 because that's all that we could accommodate on their call the last, um, last week, two weeks ago. And that's sharing the most up to date, what the messaging is, what the direction is, you know. We are planning another one for, uh, this coming Monday and we'll be talking, you know, giving our community members updates on where we are with events. You know, hopefully being able to once again, share some, um, approved guidelines for opening, um, some of their businesses. Again, you know, we're talking about in marking messaging to the travelers to help the traveler understand what's expected when they come into the community or, or what we hope that they will do while they're in our region for, to keep not only them safe, but our community members safe. And then the other thing that we're working on, Jim, um, that we might want to touch on here is the Politely Placid campaign.
Yeah, before we go there to another one on the community support, today we entered a partnership with the North Country Chamber. And why that's important is that as we all know, we're not going to be opening so much by single towns or villages. The region's going to open together. And the, and concentrating on the regional approach is going to be important for us as, as we move down the road. The North Country Chamber will bring some additional tools to the table that we normally don't have in training the businesses and other areas like that. So we're trying to give this a regional approach because that's how we're going to open up as we move forward. But the Politely Placid thing is something that we're, uh, just starting to work on. And, uh, this is an example of one that we, we would use for social distancing, you know, comparing six feet to a full rack of a moose. But go ahead MJ.
Well, there's a conversation, um, you know, about you know, from a community perspective, we've all been very supportive in our community of each other and a lot of initiatives have been put forth that are really show the best part of, of our community and how we're really are pretty amazing at reaching out and helping each other and, and the kindness that we have. And so we don't know if it's reflected as well as maybe it should be in our community. And so as we started to look around and think about, what are some of the little things that we could do for our community and the people that live here? Just to give it a little bit nicer of feeling and a little bit, you know, more warm and fuzzy. And so, you know, obviously the first thing that's on everybody's top of mind is safety and social distancing and wearing a mask. And any of us that, you know, go into Hannaford's or Walgreens or Price Chopper or walk by some of our parks. The social distancing and the wear a mask are very necessary. And we certainly support all of that messaging, but we think maybe there's a nicer way to say it and and kind of to start getting that Politely Placid campaign out, which is just really to create an upbeat and visual pleasing and Adirondack branding messaging. And so this is one of the things that we wanted to show you that, you know, we certainly wouldn't do anything without the village and town approval. But this is, you know, just a, a first swipe at it. Maybe, um, you know, you've all seen on the six feet apart saves lives. Maybe this, we could replace, um, some of those, you know, with posters around our village and maybe, you know, signage going into stores with the, have the mask. Maybe we have another poster that has, you know, maybe the moose would have a mask on him or another Adirondack animal. And, you know, maybe we can do something a little, um, you know, with the, we call them garage sale signs, you know, that are in the grounds, maybe having something a little bit more with an Adirondack flair and a little bit more friendly.
We hope to develop.
Be a great place to start.
Yeah, a whole series of this kind of messaging that will be available for businesses to use as well as for our visitors to easily see and identify with. And those protocols and processes are still changing and there, it's going to be an ongoing process as we go down this road.
And again, we talked about, you know, the messaging for the traveler when they're going to go into a restaurant, which we know it's going to be different now than it ever has been in the past. So, you know, what do they need to know? Before they go into the restaurant and before they go into a retail store or walking into a lodging property. And so maybe if we could have this themed message that does say welcome and does say thank you and does have kind of a good feel to it. I think would be a nice thing, not only for the traveler, but more importantly for our community members and just a differentiator.
You know, this is going to be a shared responsibility, both with our business community, employees and also the travelers. We have to understand that we have to educate and, and make everybody understand that the responsibility here is shared.
Thinking of sharing. I'm gonna, should I take the moose off?
Sure, take the moose off. Um, you know, another thing that we did want to talk about is the events. As Jay Rand on with us, I think he joined us today with a call with the horse show. I see Jay there.
Yeah, I'm on.
And you know, we've, uh, I think it was last week that we had, or the week before, I can't remember, that we got all the event organizers together on a call. And no final decisions were made by anybody because everybody recognizes we're going to be taking direction from the state, public health, counties and our local governments. But at this point, you know, it's, it's, as the closer we get to summer, the more challenging it is going to be for the events to happen. So we just have to understand that no final decisions have been made at the state level, other than a couple of events they've identified. But we've been sharing the information with the state and our public health employees, our public health authorities uh, on, on the events, how they might be able to be downsized, what protocols could be put in place. But the jury is still somewhat out at this point. And I think that we've probably got another 10 days or two weeks before final decisions are made on events.
But we do tend to see the writing on the wall for the most part. I think to be transparent, we, you know, we also talked about, could there be a different version of some of these events that are much smaller and much more, you know, that could follow the protocols that would be set forth. But again, we're, like Jim said.
You know, the horse show is, you know, end of June, June 23rd it starts. That's the most challenging one right now to really wrap everybody's hands around. But that work is being done, discussions are on and we'll see where we end up. Everybody's got public health as their number one criteria.
Absolutely.
Um, we also, any questions on, on those or any so far on that?
Hey Jim.
Peter.
Yes.
Hey, how you doing, Jim?
Okay, how are you?
So the Roost starts marketing, let's say in June. Everything you're talking about, come to Lake Placid, we're open, we're safe, all this stuff. The hotels start marketing the same kind of message. And then let's say that some of the, our local citizens say we're attracting people from the city that are going to bring us death. What do we do?
Well, what we've got to do, and that's in our local kickstart, Peter, where we're going to start addressing those issues a little more thoroughly. And that's why we have to have the protocols and processes in place as directed by the state and the public health authorities. So our plan is that we're, you know, that's going to be a challenge. But the, at the same time, we have to get our, the local travel sentiment to understand that we've got to, if we can do things safely, that we have to get some business activity has to happen for the benefit of the community long term. So we know that that's going to be a challenge and we hope that we're going to have the right information to pass on primarily from public health is how we're going to.
And my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, you know, the message has to be delivered, but my understanding, our understanding is they're going to be watching all areas very closely. And, and that's part of the requirements of public health in this, um, in Essex County, that if there is any type of tick up in, you know, illness, that there has to be a protocol in place as to what's going, you know, what, what are those next steps? You know, from hospital capacity to quarantining to, you know, reducing the traveler in the area if that's what needs to happen. So, I mean, I. So, I mean, I.
You know, the governor's office has come up with a 12-step process and that's really what's going to be followed as we go down this road. I don't know if anybody listened to today, I didn't hear it, but I saw a summary. Is that on reopening, there's different phases, hotels accommodations are in the third phase. Entertainment events of that nature are in the fourth phase. So we don't have timing on that yet, but clearly there's, there's, we have to follow their direction. And that's, that's our intent at this time.
I guess I have a question, but first the feedback. So I'm looking at your website and I felt the feedback that I have received from the community was that maybe Roost wasn't responsive enough when the outbreak happened. The, the we're here could be misinterpreted as come on up if you wanted to get out.
We will be here.
We will be here. It's still kind of ambiguous to a lot. Where pause now, play later was, I think, fantastic. If we would have had that messaging initially, I think the, the feedback that I got from local residents would feel that they're being looked out at for per se.
Yeah.
They're looking at it at the same time. The we will be here and the pause now, play later were the same, came out at the same time.
Oh, I understand, but the, as it unfolded, we'll still be here. It's still ambiguous as in like, if we want to get out, Lake Placid will still be here, so come on up. There, even though that's, from the locals' perspective, we're still here would be, well, when we're, when everything's ready. But that's, but you're now speaking to us per se, Roost, as the local community, you're speaking to the visitors. So there's a little bit of ambiguity in the, and that was the feedback that I received.
And I can understand that, but most, most of the backup copy with that, that's where the, you know, pause now, play later. And that was where it was very specific, we said, please don't come. We will be, I mean, that's, that was clearly the message we tried to develop.
Yeah, I just, I looked at the website and it's just, we'll still be here was on this blast page. And then I click on the banner, it says for information, then the next page you go to is, and then it's now not time to visit. I think a lot of people would have, I think would have appreciated a more of a, less ambiguous message initially. Like, I know unfortunately, like, I love the pause now, play later. Unfortunately, we have that on the banner page, then the perception from the public is Roost is, is thinking about the community at large. Obviously, my second question is.
I just want to make one comment on that, just so you know. When we do our social media, we don't drive people to our, most people don't get to our webs, the homepage of our website. They get to the page that we drive them to from, you know. And so on all of the pages that we drive them to in our social media platform, it's all about pause now, play later, we'd love you to come, but now's not the time. So just hoping that.
Now it is, but I'm saying at the start of it, I'm talking about responsive, which leads to my next question is that there's anticipation in the fall, since we're, the traveling is going to be reinvented. And I, I feel that Roost is positioned to be the best vehicle for our region to reinvent that. Where, I think my question is, are you, I know there's a lot of planning involved with restarting us, but those may be rolling situations to the fall. Are you currently planning for those particular with messaging saying pause now, play later? When those sort of maybe potential hiccups in the fall resurface?
Absolutely, absolutely. We are, our campaigns and our planning is extremely agile. We know what we're doing today, might need to change tomorrow and, you know, and I respect your opinion and I don't necessarily disagree. Maybe, you know, our turnaround time on the pause now, you know, in hindsight could have been, you know, quicker. But we certainly have become better and better at this as time goes on. And so we're planning for each of these phases and also the stop phase. If that comes, we're ready.
Right, and it's not agile right now. And 100% right on, being agile and be willing to understand that it changes almost on a daily basis sometimes.
And I only mentioned this as feedback because Roost is so critical to the area and restarting. But with it being such an influential stakeholder in the community, there, there's a certain level of, say, a local trust, kind of alluding to what Peter is talking about. If there is some trust built up within the community that Roost as a stakeholder, a significant stakeholder, has in mind the community, it would go a long way to minimize sort of a, sort of a, what's the word I'm looking for, a pushback from local communities, does that make sense?
Yes, it does, understood.
Yeah, agreed.
Other questions, comments?
We did have one other thing, well, we have two actually. But in, it's probably good timing with your comment, Jason, is that we just wanted to get some feedback and we don't feel that this would come necessarily from our organization. But as things start to warm up and second homeowners are going to start opening their homes for the summer, it, should there be a letter? We do have one drafted, if, if the village board would like to take a look at it, that could be sent out to, or posted wherever to the second homeowners, just welcoming them back and suggested best practices for when they come back to the region, for the quarantine, self-quarantining for two weeks, using food deliveries, bringing supplies with them so that they're not, you know, out and about in the community while they're self-quarantining, et cetera. Just thought it would be a suggestion if you would want to consider that or if you think that's necessary.
In my opinion, I think it's necessary. There are many that have already come up and it's hit or miss as to, depending on how integrated to the community. My neighbor has just come up, it's a summer home. She's very aware of and has worked her way, has made herself very familiar with the community. So neighbors have, she's adhering to best practices and neighbors have reached out to go and go to the store for her and so on and so forth. But the feedback, and this is purely anecdotal, is she's the exception, not the norm. So I would think that's a very important letter to, to distribute to second homeowners.
MJ, I would, I would, I would think that that type of activity, especially in communities that are just destination resorts with a lot of second home activity, would, would see that as practical. The question that I would have, and certainly I would, I think the village would be happy to review the documentation that might be developed. The questions would really be in terms of how you get that message to them. Because I think in the beginning of this process, now only less than two months ago, one thing that we found was that we, at the time, did not have a, a contact mechanism for our second homeowners, except what we did do and what the county did, which issued generalized statements of this is just not the time to come. So.
I do think that that message got to them, the second home, that this, and so I think just by the same platforms, you know, which we do want to welcome them back, we just want them to ask them to please adhere to the safest practices. And I think they're posting them the same way that we did the previous messaging and the press will pick it up. I think that.
Or it's just, there are certain lists out there of like the shore owners and that sort of thing that we can certainly talk to them about and posting it on all of our sites, I think is important. Because I think we've, some of the feedback we've gotten from some, you know, long-term second homeowners is that they weren't sure if they felt welcome this summer. And we wanted to make sure that they felt welcome because they're, they are important for the community.
That's going to be a reoccurring theme as, and just alluding back to what Peter is saying. There's going to be a, depending on how well Roost, the village and town board and the county and the state roll this out, is, is going to, is going to have a significant impact on the temperament of the local community and the, whether they're accepting or not. So we have a chance to influence that positively, but I think we have to do that safely as well. And that's just, you know, that's the feedback that I've received from the community. And I think maybe a letter from the supervisor and the mayor to second homeowners, just welcoming them back, you know, have them sign it and then that would be ideal, a nice personal welcome letter, but.
Well, we have something drafted up that we're happy to share and you can edit or disregard or use whatever you so choose. No, no hard feelings, just a starting point.
And my last, in my last, a sort of, I would say, recommendation or some feedback is to, I understand that within the process you already have thought about this, but think, find the, a way that works for Roost and the village board to be transparent to the community as to educate them and to open up a dialogue with them. The feedback I've received that there's, there's a disconnect that things happen in spite of them as opposed into relation with them, if that makes sense. So I think that, I think that's critical and I, and I would be remiss if I did not bring that up since, you know, two influential people from Roost are at the meeting here.
And we respect that and, and, you know, we agree and are working diligently to close that community gap because we are community partners and we are here for the health and wellness of the community. I mean, tourism is for the health and wellness of the community. And, and I think over time, there, you know, whether events or, or whatever it might be, there might be that sentiment and that we are trying to change that. And so I, I love that idea of having conversation and communication that they can be heard and understood and. And I also think that part of that Politely Placid is, you know, whether we're talking to our neighbor or someone travel, a second homeowner or somebody traveling here for, you know, to enjoy the mountains and the fresh air. I think there's something really important to be said about, we've all, no matter where we're from or where we lay our head and I have had a really rough experience. And some people have had, have lost many family members and loved ones. And, you know, just let's be nice to each other, you know, no matter where we're from and let's be polite. And I think just starting there will change the course of many things that happen in our community and our region and hopefully across our country.
No, I agree. And I, and I just to circle back, I, I, again, just the feedback I get from the community, if they feel that they are thought of and concerned for, that intrinsic host mentality will come back. And if it, and if it's not, I feel that we'll have less of that intrinsic host mentality.
Which is for all of us, so that's a good point. We appreciate you're open to hear anything at any time, Jason. So please feel like pass it on when you do hear it and we will be reactive to it. It's, you know, it's a difficult time for all of us. And as MJ said, if we're going to be successful as a travel destination, we have to be a successful community first. And that's what that's all about. So, so we certainly understand that and.
And Jason, you know, a lot of times it can be a one-on-one conversation. So, you know, if you are having a conversation with somebody and it has that tone and they're open to Jim or I calling them to, to talk it through and hear what they have to say, we would love to do that. It doesn't have to be in a group of 50 people to make that a conversation, you know. I mean, it doesn't have to be a big public hearing. It can be, you know, one or two people at a time for whenever and as often.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Welcome that for sure. One other area we wanted to discuss, the good news is, if you remember, we had the International Children's Games in January of 19. And we did that, we got a market, a New York grant for $250,000 to get that up and running. Because the mayor committed to this event, by the way, just getting there. But we did borrow $237,000, I think, from the Community Economic Development Loan Fund. If you, if you all remember that at that time. We did get the market New York grant in this past month, I guess it was the end of March when we got it. And what we would like you all to consider is that we would like to, as we've agreed to, pay off all the interest. And we'd like to keep that loan active during this recovery time, especially for programming here in Placid that we have to do. Our finances, just like everybody else, are a little bit difficult right now. And this would allow us to do some of the programming we've talked about. So what we'd like you to consider, Mary, I think you've gotten the letter on it from John Huttlinger, that we'd like to clean up all the interest on that, pay interest monthly and keep the loan active probably until next year, until we really see how the revenues start flowing again. So we'd like you to give consideration to that.
Now, I think it's, I can respond to the village, Jim and MJ, that the letter has been received. It is, it's going to the appropriate locations and people here for consideration. There may have to be some documentation changes, if in fact that's possible. So we'll get back to you with that information.
Very good. I think, is that, do we cover everything, Mary Jane?
I believe so, unless there's any additional questions, comments or concerns. Yes, Arthur?
You mentioned quarantining and you mentioned two weeks. To me, that's kind of a broad net. Have you given any thought to the person that lives somewhere between here and New York in a small area? They haven't been out of the house, they come up here. In essence, haven't they been quarantined for two weeks? Or from the person who does work outside the house, they're not necessarily quarantined in their house. Or let's say a first responder that they've all been tested and their family's been tested and they don't have the virus and they come up here and they have a second home. Are you still recommending they stay indoors for two weeks? Have you given any thought to any of that? What do we tell people?
I think that it has to come from public health. It's not really for us to really understand that or to try to direct people in that way. All we should be doing is passing on the information that we get from those authorities, I feel.
So have they given that any thought or do they have any recommendations? Or at this point, are they just saying, no matter your circumstances, stay indoors for two weeks?
Well, we have a call with them on Wednesday and we will ask that question.
Okay, thank you.
Other cross-state comments? Mindy, did you have a question?
Yeah, just based upon the letter that you're trying to get out to secondary homeowners, we may want to keep in mind, we mail out electric bills to them once a month. And our program prints out, out of town versus in town, based upon zip code. So we could always stuff them in as an additional mailer into our electric bills, if that's something you wanted to do.
That's a great idea.
Thank you. Anything else for the crustaceans? If not, I certainly express our appreciation, Jim and MJ, having you both address. And obviously this will become circulated, Anita, to the public starting tomorrow. So this will get, this, based on the last meeting we did in this manner, got about, what?
At least 100 views.
Got over 100 views. So it will reach out into the community and it will begin the conversation with the community that there is some real planning going on. I think Jim and MJ, you and I discussed the other day the fact that obviously the village is beginning its spring, spring cleanup. There's a number of issues, there's a list of things that have been closed throughout this two-month period. We're looking at all of those. And I think I suggested to you that we would, that the village probably should be working closely with you as we develop the local Kickstarter part of the program at least and try to get ourselves ready. Keep in mind that the village too, just like every employer, even though it was essential services that we're providing, has been literally operating at about 50% productivity. Because in order to protect our employees at any given time, half of our scheduled employees are, are on the job working and the other half are held in abeyance so that in the event there were a virus cross-infection, we don't lose an entire department, especially critical departments like water and electricity and wastewater. departments like water and electricity and wastewater. We are beginning, and we have been, we're out cleaning the streets, and that will go on, I believe, once Mother Nature stops dumping snow on us, that we'll be able to freshen up the crosswalks, the parking lines on the street, and that sort of activity. Charisse, from the beautification standpoint, has put out some early plans. We've got our fingers crossed that we're not too early, but you're seeing the effect that just a few bright yellow daffodils scattered around the village, it does begin to give the village a little bit of an appearance of color in otherwise what's been an fairly gray existence. Anything else for Jim and MJ? If not, I thank you both. The presentation, I think, is useful and helpful, and let's keep them going.
Thank you very much. If you have any comments in time, we're all in this together, so we have to move forward, and things will change as we're moving forward, we all recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move back into the Section 3 of the agenda. You have the Village Board minutes from the last meeting of April 20 in front of you. If there are no corrections or omissions that need to be noted, I would ask for a motion accepting the minutes as presented.
I'm over.
And Peter, was it Jason's second? If you put your hand up, then we'll know who's speaking. Thank you. Minutes are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are accepted. The next item you have on the agenda is Electric Department seeking authorization to go out for 15,000 feet of specialized submarine cable, which is going to be used to replace some cable between, that runs around the peninsula and feeds power into some of the sections of Lake Placid Lake. You all have a package with that invitation there. In addition to the 15,000 feet of submarine cable, there is also 2,500 feet of number two cable, I'm sorry, 7,500 feet, three reels.
Kimball's on the call, if you want him to say anything.
And also a single reel of number one cable. Those are items that will be put back in inventory. We try to keep, I think, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the goal is to try to keep three reels of cable in inventory. At this point in time, Kimball is recommending that we proceed with those three items of cabling inventory that are necessary for the electric department. Any comments or questions? I know we discussed this briefly at our last work session. If not, I would ask for a motion authorizing the electric department to go out for bid.
Removed.
Jason, second? Do we have a second?
Second.
There's no other questions or comments, we'll call a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes care of that.
Mike, I think when you asked Kimball to speak, his mic is muted. Are you able to unmute him on your end?
I sent him a request to unmuted, he has to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm actually trying to message him now, too.
Let's see if we can get Kimball on. The next item is a recommendation from Kimball involving the promotion of a, of an existing employee who actually currently fills position of apprentice groundsman. Looking ahead to later this year, it appears that one, if not two, of our experienced senior linemen are going to be leaving the employ of the village. And looking ahead at the number of months that it takes to get someone through lineman school, the department is requesting and recommending that we fill a lineman, or a lineman third-class position. And at the same time, that that lineman be enrolled in the most, the upcoming lineman school, and again, that's, that's about a six-step process to get from lineman third-class all the way to journeyman. So at this point, this is just some forward thinking. I would point out that we have two individuals right now in lineman school, they're second-class linemen, they're moving up the ladder and will become first-class. But given the fact that it takes, I believe, oh, three years to get fully accredited for journeyman work, it's imperative that we make the steps now so that we don't become short-handed with the people we meet up on those poles when the power goes out. In this particular case, the recommendation is that Jared Hathaway, he advanced, he's currently serving as an apprentice groundsman, where he's been for six months, and he moved to third-class lineman step one. The pay rate is $20.40, and his probationary period, actual, his initial probationary period, has been completed as of tomorrow. He's demonstrated, in the opinion of the superintendent, all the skills necessary, the work ethic, that would make him a good candidate for the village's duties, sending on for further education in that field. With that introduction, any comments or questions to be added? If not, I would ask for a motion supporting the recommendation of the electric superintendent to advance Jared to lineman third-class, and at the same time, to enroll him as an upcoming candidate for the next lineman school that will be beginning later this summer.
Removed.
Peter?
Sorry, good.
Second? Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and I don't know if Kimball's unmuted yet, it looks like he is. Yes, no?
He is.
Kimball, did you care to make any further comment? Not getting him.
Man a few words.
The next item we have was an issue that was under discussion earlier. The decision has been made, the building department, to move ahead with a contract with Host Compliance, which is a service that will assist the building department with the management and administration and application periods for the short-term rental program that we put into place, became effective March 17. In connection with engaging the company in a contract that will be between the town of North Elve, I understand, and Host Compliance, discussion took place regarding the amount of time that would be required at this point for Host Compliance to, A, engage, engage and execute the contract, and also implement the program. They were looking for a minimum of four weeks, correct me if I'm wrong. And the concept here was that, therefore, the building department came down with the recommendation that we look at extending the enforcement period, which was initially 90 days from March 17, and would essentially be completed by June 15, to extend that by an additional 60 days, which extended to mid-August. In some discussion that I've had today with the, with our building department, and also with Emily, Emily Bullity, who's been spearheading the short-term rental activities that are required to get it operative, I've been able to understand that, well, we felt that 60 days was a little uncomfortable, and basically used up the summer, that, that if we could, if we could come up with a compromise that would accommodate Host Compliance and provide enough time for the mechanics to get it in place, that it was conceivable, and Mike Oriselli agreed that they would try to make this work, that if we could give them until August 1st, which is roughly a 45-day extension, if you look at the calendar, we approved this on March 17th, and this is May 4, we're already 45 days out, and while the application process has gotten underway, it has been relatively slow at this point, so there hasn't been, if we're going to make this change, and I believe it's, and I could make, we should make it right now and get Host Compliance on board, and try to get this done so that we don't have any more gaps in the program. I think, I know I had some discussion with UR, because you had indicated we thought maybe a 30-day window. I think their explanation as to the time requirements here, from the perspective of the fact that we're bringing a contract person in to do a lot of the work that we're going to have to hire people to, is worth the additional time that's being required to make that contract operative. I open the floor for discussion.
So instead of the initial, at the workshop session, Mayor, you had mentioned that there was a quest for a 60-day, so now it's reduced to 45, is that what I'm hearing?
I suggested today, and discussed with Emily, who's been the point person from the town board, and with the folks upstairs in the building office, and with Mike Oriselli, I just did an exploration of how critical a 60 days was, and how much could we trim that and still make it operative so that it would work? I think the important thing here is, we want this program and this product to work well, and to get it, to get it.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mike Oriselli, I'm on the call.
Hi, Mike, would you care to speak? If not, to get the program operative.
Yes, please, if you, if you don't mind. So, the law went into effect on, effective date of March 19th, and we had a 90-day moratorium built into that to allow people to get permits until June 17th. We are simply asking that we push that date back, because if we contract, which we most likely will, tomorrow at the workshop, the town will need four to six weeks to get the software package that these Host Compliance company is providing to conform to our law and to all our needs, which include letters that go out automatically for reminders, 24/7 hotline for complaints, that people can upload pictures and audio to. I mean, it does everything that would take at least, at least one other employee, if not more, to achieve in this software package, and it is not cheap, and we understand that, and we're okay with that, but it will save time and money for the town in the long run. So we're simply asking to push it back. We, originally, the number, and I didn't have anything to do with the dates, August 14th was the suggested date, August 1st will still work, so whatever you, ladies and gentlemen, are willing to give us, we'd be happy, it's just understand that the program cannot be up and running and, for at least four to six weeks after we contract with them. And it would alleviate the need for mailing permits, which right now is a little cumbersome, where people have to download all the paperwork from our website, fill it all out, put it in an envelope, and either mail it to us, or scan it back in and email it to us. Everything can be done online through a portal that the software company, Host Compliance, will provide, and it'll be a little bit more seamless. So we've collected somewhere around 60 applications so far, paper-wise, they will be inputted by current staff. We had budgeted for another staff member if we didn't have this program, which would cost about, the town about $40,000 a year, plus increments and so forth, and this would be, you know, an annual fee, depending on how long the town decides to, you know, contract with them, and we won't need to hire more, more help. So I'm just asking that you extend it. If August 1st works for you, that's fine, August 14th, not an issue, either way, we'll make it work. But we need at least four to six weeks to get this program up and running where it's functional, it's user-friendly, and that the community can benefit, and we can benefit from less work, if you will.
So Mike and Mayor, the question is, now that this is law, people are technically not allowed to rent short-term rentals until they have a permit, correct? Am I correct?
No, you're not correct. They have a 90-day moratorium that they can rent from the enactment of the code, which was March 19th, until the current cutoff date, which is June 17th. What we're suggesting is that we push it back to August 1st or 14th, your call, to allow the software program people to get us up and running, so that everybody can be in compliance. And the 90-day limitation to certain rentals will not take effect until the day that the moratorium's over. So for this year, for this year, most people are going to get passed, even though most people are not renting right now, which is a beautiful thing.
But that's going to change, but that's my concern, so.
But January 1st, the clock starts again, so you might get the rest of this year.
Well, it's just, I don't know if it's advantageous for the village, especially with the circumstances that we're facing, that to rush a permit system, or allow them the opportunity to rent when New York State doesn't really want to, and all, at very most, we can ask them politely not to do it. So we ought to leverage the, our ability to regulate them, to say, no, you can't rent until you have a permit.
Jason.
I was going to say, you can ask Janet about that, the legality of that, but either way, they're going to have.
The way that local law reads is that we are not going to enforce it for 90 days from the date it was filed, so we're, there's no enforcement currently with regard to the usage of anybody's property as short-term rental. That is the way it's actually written, not that they can or can't do it, other than, the only thing says is, we're not enforcing the permit requirement at this point, because we needed to give people an opportunity after the law was passed to get their applications in and permitted.
I know, I understand that, so after June 17th, they need a permit? Yes?
They need, they need a permit by June 17th, yes.
Okay, so, my question is, why would we allow them the ability to rent during, when we haven't really come out of this yet?
So we, so a permit, according to the law, a permit is submitted, we have 30 days to process that permit. If we end up with 600, 700 permits in the next month and a half, we're never going to get all those permits done.
Okay.
So, again, it would, it's a logistical and common sense, if you ask me, to extend it a little bit, so we get the program up and running, to make it easier not only for my staff, but for the clients, if you will, you know, participants in this program, and be able to track people. Otherwise, we're going to have a lot of rogue rentals going on that we have no control over.
We have a lot, I just, it's.
Yeah, but then we got to find them, then we got to find them, track them down, which is going to be very onerous, again, we're, we've got four people. we're, we've got four people, two of us are code enforcement.
In the context of public safety, logistics difficulty isn't, is paramount.
We've been talking about this problem for three to five years. Public safety, being what it is, I understand, and I'm all on board to get it done as soon as possible. But the reality is, it would be better, I think, for the community and for, for the department and for the village to, you know, present to the public, hey, we're trying to make this work for everybody the best we can, let's not just cut them off. I know, I know you're against short-term rentals, I appreciate that position, but we need. Controlled, we need to.
Short-term rentals, Mike, I'm not against short-term rentals.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not trying to speak for you, but.
My person, the constituents I represent didn't necessarily get all that they wanted within the legislation, but we are moving forward with the legislation, so.
There's, there's a lot of people that didn't get what they wanted, Jason.
What was that?
There's quite a few people that, there's quite a few people that didn't get what they wanted. Some people are losing the ability to rent certain properties. I mean, this was a.
We can get into this.
A process.
Primarily what the conversation's about. I guess it's one of those situations where we have a lot, and we have a lot on the books. Now, we want to accommodate people being able to rent when there's a time when public safety isn't necessarily, since you can do it now, if it's not contained in what would be a commercial district, now it's in residential zones, we're inviting people into this area who are renting, and it's being injected into the community itself. So I guess compared to that, with that context, I'm not trying to be difficult, but that context, I'm less likely to approve an extension to be able to continue.
Jason, I don't think anybody, anybody into the community, I think, based on what we just spent, nice, hadn't heard a nice presentation from Roost, there's no, we're not inviting anybody into the community. The message is.
Roost isn't.
Stay safe, pause, by, by giving a little bit of an extension to accommodate, the process is not an invitation to anybody to come to the community, it's not an invitation to anybody to rent. That's a, I think that's a mistaken representation to say it's an invitation.
Well, I would think that many people would represent that. So if we are due to, if we were going to give an extension, I think it should be explicit on behalf of the board and communicated to the short-term rentals that, to continue not renting. This extension isn't a sort of an implicit sort of, okay, just start renting. No, and not leave it up to the individual person to perceive it as an implicit.
And I don't perceive that that's the way it's being presented. I think it's being presented as a necessary step in order to complete the process and get everything on board with the program that was presented. And I know you're on Jay, but it's my understanding that the town board is ready to contract with Host Compliance for at least a one-year term.
That's correct.
And that they're the one, in order to get this up and running, need the time. Now, is it too bad that we didn't talk to them six months ago? Yes. But this is actually where we are now, and I think that everybody is saying this is the way to go. You heard the presentation. The economic situation will dictate, in some part, what's going to happen with short-term rentals here in the near future and the long term. But to characterize it as an invitation, I think is, is probably not correct.
Well, I would have to disagree, Janet, but we can agree to disagree.
Jason, let me, let me, let me make two, two more points and then I'll, you know, defer to whatever you guys decide, and you can certainly call me later or tomorrow. So one, I get 15 or more calls a day on the short-term rental process, all from current rental people. All, 99% of them have stated to me unequivocally that they're not renting now, and yes, there are those that are, and I, you know, I know they're out there, but probably 99% of them are not because of the current pandemic crisis. The second point I want to make is that when we told the board to vote on this and asked everybody to, you know, get ready to enact this code, we were under the assumption that this software program that we had, which originally was part of a grant program, and I don't want to get into all the details, but it didn't work out that the program was what we were promised. So we thought we were set to go, and unfortunately, that wasn't the case. So we're asking both boards to ask, to give us a little time to get the new contract with Host Compliance, up and running before, and we're going to ask people to stop sending in paper permits until they can do it all online. And this way, it'll alleviate a lot of the work that my staff has to do, it'll be easier to coordinate and file, if you will, and we will be better positioned going forward to control the issues that I know you're very passionate about. So that's, that's all I have to say.
This is, this is an administrative issue, it's not anything else. This is just get this, all the applications done.
No, I understand.
Than we originally thought, but it needs more time.
I understand. But the, now, in order to move forward, the board is being asked to extend something, and I have reservations about extending it. I understand the circumstances. So that's, I'm just expressing my reservations. And these aren't new reservations. At the workshop session, I was repeating the exact same thing, so.
Janet, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Janet.
Yeah, I got you.
Seeing as the June 15th is the deadline in the local law, how can we override that when it's in the local law? Wouldn't we have to change the local law for that date to change for the enforcement?
I think we can do this by regulation under the reserve powers that we have. It's a, it's a decision to enforce or not to enforce. It's not, it's not a change in the local law. We, we've discussed this, Ron and I, and we feel comfortable that we can do this.
We're also under a declaration of emergency. That's continued for another, almost through May 15th, I believe.
That's correct. And actually, at the county level, it gets renewed every week.
Yep.
If I could throw my opinion out, I, I agree with Mike Orselli that it would be nice to have them go online and save the code enforcement office a lot of work. I also think it would be nice if maybe at Jay's level, you could reach out if you do enact this agreement in the next day or two, ask them their opinion and how long it will take them to have it up and running. So far, you said four to six weeks. If they say they can do it in four, let's, let's use the four-week period, tack on one more month for people to go online, and that should probably put us somewhere between the middle of July and July 21st, not that much of an extension. I could support that.
And, and the workshop.
And then if you, probably if Host Compliance can't come through with what they said, they need more time, let them come back to us and we can extend it.
I, and I, and just to be clear, I agree with you, Art, and I mentioned this at the workshop session, that.
So Art, that's what I think.
And in light of the circumstances and what the governor has pushed on, and like, and to extend that 30 days, but then we get to 45 to 60, and then it's, it just doesn't ever end.
There's another option here. There's a firm date option, or there's an option that could go out that says until further notice.
Yeah, but the applicants need to know when the last days they can apply.
Well, I, I agree with you, and I, I think they can't, what we're saying to the applicant is you can't apply until, now, you can't apply until we get Host Compliance up and running. And then they, they would have, because all we're deferring, remember, is enforcement, not the application. So that's why Host Compliance has to get up and running and have some period of time to process the applications. That's what I understand. So I'm just saying, to talk to Art's point, is if Host Compliance came back and said, okay, we're ready now, we could put out a notice that says, gives a date, if that's the board's wish, and we fudge it by saying until further, or until further notice. I, I'm not suggesting that's the best way to go. I like the idea of a date. But every time that we change our mind or come up with a different plan or scenario, I think we, you got to look that it, how, how does that look to the, the public and to the short-term renters?
I think that it's me holding the feet to the fire of the intention of the land or the vacation rental policy.
I think we pretty well exhausted the topic. You understand the issues and why the request is being made. I would be happy to entertain a motion, providing the required time. Frankly, I would be happy to see it at August 1st, which is probably 45 days, but additional. But that is largely because this program has got to work. We're trying to smooth out rough feelings in the community. To Jason's point, that the current virus, this pause program interferes with that, that is true, but that is all under the governor's control. We have demonstrated, I think, probably 90% effectively, that people have adhered to the suggestion, if not enforcement, that they not come up here now, but come at a time when it's more appropriate. And I think, I think that is what we're going to continue. That's what we listened to Jim and Mary Jane talk about early on, but we certainly are, are still being directed by the state in terms of what it feels is reasonable. When they start opening up recreational businesses and events, and sporting events, then I think the signal's going to be pretty clear, that the state is satisfied that it is safe again for people to travel. We don't know that that's even going to happen before the end of summer, to be quite frank. That hasn't been made clear yet. So I'm, I'm not concerned about the additional days that Host Compliance is asking. That is not created by Host Compliance. That was created by the conclusion that the systems that we had available, we're not going to provide the optimal results that we needed or wanted, and that there is an opportunity out there to do that. So to the extent that we've used up 45 days, give or take, since March 17 through 19, that's the time it took us to reach out to this point and try to find a corrective action that would work. We're trying to work, this is an administrative issue, more than anything else at this point. Enforcement will happen, and frankly, I think it's already happening, even though people aren't fully engaged into the program. I, I'm, we're, we're getting inquiries, the mayor's offices, various metropies, that are trying to make a decision as to whether they're even going to continue to participate in it. That's not a bad thing, but it is all part of the process that's happening here. So getting an application process in place so that we can deal with the day-to-day business that we have to, in my opinion, is better than for the community at large. And it still leaves us down the road, the land use code revisions, that will take considerably more time to get in place. In the meantime, we have covenants that we can begin to enforce, and that's something we did not have a year ago.
I'd also add to that, Mayor, that there's no reason why our local police department cannot, at this point, be enforcing parking laws, noise, noise ordinance. We have certain things in place, and they can be enforced.
All right, Craig, can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
To extend the date of enforcement provision of the law from June 17th to July 31?
Second.
The motion, and we have a second on the floor to extend the enforcement date from June 17th to July 31, which is roughly 45 days. Any further discussion on that topic? If we've exhausted the discussion at this point, then we'll call a motion. All those in favor of Peter's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So the motion will pass, and we will extend the enforcement date to July 31st. Mike, I wish your staff and Jay, I wish the town a lot of success in getting this contract signed tomorrow. I think that will be great.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Doing it.
Supervisor, just want you to know that I do appreciate the, the program, the, the extension, the program are not mutually exclusive. I completely support the program and all the work that the town board has done, 100%. And thank you. It's, the extension is something a little bit different for me. I don't want you to mistake that I intertwine.
I, I understand that completely, and I respect your opinions and, and values. Certainly, you're speaking from the heart, no question about it, and I personally really feel this is a great program, and I think a lot, due to the unusual circumstances right now, and Mike's commentary, I couldn't have put it any better than, than he did, for certain. So I'm, I feel comfortable going until July 31st, for, for sure. And I think it's going to be a really great program, and from the other end, I think, you know, the little extra time will help make this a much smoother transition. And I think if we get a real good start right off the bat, that it's something that's really going to benefit all of us.
On an unrelated note, I want to thank you for the amount of information that you continue to disseminate to the boards about the health updates of the county and the town of North Elba. It's knowledge is power, and thank you very much for continuing with that information.
Appreciate it, and I'll, I'll just keep everything that comes, comes by from the county. You know, I have direct communication with them, just about on a daily basis, so I'm just trying to perform a duty of getting it to the people that need to hear it.
I watch the governor, and I look forward to your emails, so thank you.
It'll, it'll keep coming as long as I get them.
All right.
Thank you. I've enjoyed sitting in with you guys, very.
You're welcome to, you're welcome to hang in there as long as you wish.
I'm getting kind of hungry.
Well, thanks. The next item we have is, is the, I had sent out a list of names to each of you in the last week that contained a dozen names of various individuals who had expressed interest in being considered as candidates to fill the short-term rentals appeals board, which is another piece of the process that we have to put in place. And you all received that list of names, and I asked you to respond and give me your top five choices. I think as of right now, everybody has done that, and I have a list of five names which, which we, we will convey to the town. The town has voted, and we now will have to reconcile, not very much, but we're going to have to reconcile the differences here. And I think the reason this probably came about is that when the town acted on this at their recent meeting, I think the following morning, there were three additional names that had been received that they had not had time to consider. So therefore, we actually voted on, on the list that the town had, plus the three additional names. And I'll just, for the sake of discussion, the five, the five names that are, that are ranked at the moment, at this moment, without further coordination with the town, are demarcated. ranked at the mo, at this moment, without further coordination with the town, are DeMarco, Ramonda, Janito, Fitzgerald, and Lawton Schultz. So those names, I will, I will convey to you, Jay, in the morning, and then we'll have to figure out how we reconcile any differences between that and what the town board had. I think there's perhaps only maybe one.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it'll be a problem. Craig, we'll, we'll reconcile.
So with that said, Janet, we have to actually vote on those. That's, we're not appointing them tonight.
That, that's correct. I don't think you, I don't think it would be wise to make the appointment until you've reconciled with the town. The other thing I would point out is that when you do have your conversation with the town and you do reconcile, remember that you'll have to appoint people for staggered terms, so that everybody doesn't, their term doesn't expire, not that they would expire, but that their term wouldn't expire all at the same time. So the reconciliation of the names and then a determination of the initial appointment duration would be something to do with the town. And assuming that the town then, if you can reconcile, if the town has to make any amendment to the action that they've already taken, that they can do that at their next board meeting, which is what, a week from tomorrow, Jay?
Yes, we have a work session tomorrow afternoon, so we can talk about.
I think you'll make your appointment probably in the board meeting. And then assuming that the reconciliation is agreed to, the, the village would move on that at its next board meeting two weeks from today.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, we've got it on the agenda to talk about it tomorrow too, so all good.
Oh, good. I'll get together with you in the morning, Jay, on that.
Okay, that'd be great, Craig.
Okay, and the next, the next item we, we have then that requires action is the, the town and village board had both resolved to move forward with, with an overhaul or an upgrade or revisions of the land use code. And the, at this point tonight, what I would like to do is have the board consider the following candidates as appointments, and this is the entire group. It consists of Emily Kilburn, town board representative, Art Devlin, who's the village board liaison, Mike Oraselli, Darcy Lepay, from the building planning office, Jackie Kelly, from the current, current member of the joint review board, Bill Billerman, who's previous joint review chair, joint review board chair, and a member of the group that actually worked on the current code, Dan Kelleher, who's an economic development planner, engaged with the Adrody Park Agency and a resident of Main Street here in Lake Placid. And additionally, Liz Clark, who is a professional planner that resides in the township. I think, I think that group represents a considerable amount of knowledge of the, of which is the good overhaul update of the land use code, which is now probably close to 10 years old and is due to some revisions. And I think, I think that makes, will make for a pretty solid steering committee as that committee goes forward. My understanding is their charge ultimately will be to locate an appropriate professional planning organization to provide some professional backdrop to the effort at this time. 10 years ago, that was not done. 10 years ago, the committee was almost 100% voluntary, including Art, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Dean told you that got right down to even having to try to do their own notes in minutes for a job that is as large as, as this job can be. So with that said, I'm happy to make those appointments tonight and confirm them. I would ask for the.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Before you make the appointment, has this been coordinated with the town? I just don't wanna get into a situation where you appoint, and then we might have to unappoint.
I think it's fair to say that there've been discussions with the town, and likewise with, with Dean Payrick, who was the chair of the development.
I guess I have a question if I could. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Mike Oraselli. We've already had our first meeting, and we have a board in place that volunteers. So I don't, I don't know the need to appoint. Again, that's your call. I would suggest that you coordinate with the supervisor if you actually want to make this an official appointed board. Dean is coordinating, but we are not using the full development commission to, to review the code at this time. We are trying to get a, the committee to review the code as it is and make recommendations before we have something to prevent, present to the public and/or to hire a outside firm to assist us in the formation of a new code due to the cost and obviously the lack of funding for probably both the town and the village at this point in time. We'd like to hold off on appointing or even putting out an RFP to find a firm that would be willing to help us, 'cause we start paying for them now, this, this process could take over a year, and that'd be a lot of expenditures for both of us, and probably not something we need to do at this point. We have a very, very talented team who have been involved in previous code revisions. We have myself and Darcy, who are the hands-on code enforcement people. And again, we're trying to streamline so that this doesn't take five years to present to the public.
Mike, am I, am I hearing you've got a committee that's different than the names the mayor just presented?
The mayor added one name that I'm not familiar with. I believe it was Liz Clark. I don't know who that person is. Everybody else on the next.
She's a real professional. She's your, she's a key person, and I, I would think that, I would, I would recommend to the village that you appoint the committee so that it has backing and authority of the village and, and the names that you, you've chosen, certainly if the town's with those, and that this committee be given a, a charge in writing as to what the town and the village expect from them, because without that, there may be some direction that isn't what's anticipated.
I would have to agree.
I guess I have a question for Janet. We've commissioned the development commission, we've appointed their board, and in the past, when we've given them tasks to do, such as the court dissolution question, sign boards, et cetera, we've allowed them to pick a committee and do what they see fit. And now it sounds like we're giving them a task to do, and we're telling them we need to approve the people who are on it. Is there a distinction between this and the others, or how do we cross?
I don't think that, this is not part, this steering committee should not be considered part of, I'm not sure the official name, the community development. This is a new committee commissioned with a very important task and one that needs some professional guidance, and it's not under the umbrella of the community development. This is separate and apart, in my view.
I, Janet, I agree with that, and we are trying not to circumvent the process. We're trying to expedite the process by having a small group of very talented local people develop a code or review the code that exists, make recommendations to our little committee before we present it to both boards and the public, so that we not.
There's no problem with that, although I think it's a much bigger task that I understand is needed, and, and that is to not only look at the code and where that might need to be amended. I think we have to look at our whole master plan that, from which the code springs. This is, this is a wholesale, perhaps amendment, change, redo, whatever you want to call it. That's how I've been approaching it, and that's how I understand it. It's not just, let's look at the code and see what needs to be changed. It's the whole engagement of the entire community in what our, what the community wants to look like between now and the future. But that, that's the way I understood it, that we were looking at it as much larger.
I agree with you. I agree with you, Janet, but I don't think that we need to engage a professional at this point that's gonna.
I'm not saying that, but I, I think the board has appointed, or I think the board and the boards should appoint the committee that they want, not somebody that was chosen without the board's input and knowledge.
Mayor.
That's, that's their prerogative, absolutely.
Well, I, I just go back to the mayor. Mayor, would you wanna reiterate what you had communicated to the, the board during workshop and other board sessions as to what the, this committee construction was going to look like? Because I, I hear dueling, dueling.
No, no, we're not dueling, we're on the same, we're on the same page, but I, I think the authority for this board, this steering committee, excuse me, comes from the boards. And the board should charge the steering committee with what their, what their duties are and what the boards expect the steering committee to do. That's all I'm saying.
No, I agree with you 100%. Just, I'm confused, because this is taking a different term from what, what was communicated to the board as a whole. So I've just.
Your understanding, Jay, is correct. When we, when we initiated a resolution in support of the formation of the steering committee, it was for the express purpose of creating a very small steering group that would initially begin the process of trying to determine where we go. Hiring a professional for assistance may be an appropriate step as this committee works its way through what needs to be done, but there is an expectation here, and certainly our resolution anticipated that, that we would be overhauling this code to address issues that were both items that maybe were of interest to the building department, to the planning board, certainly to our boards. We're the governing body that ultimately is responsible for these boards' activity. We're giving the steering committee more substance. It is not a committee. It is, it is being given authority to move forward with a very vital role in our community, which is, which is the refinement of our land use codes, which clearly needs some help. But also, and I, I'm not gonna speak for the steering committee, but I believe they'll ultimately have to look at the comprehensive plan, at least generally. Comprehensive plan is something that the development commission, Art, would address in the normal process that has in years past. I expect it will again in the future. But I think the land use code, at this point, has been an issue that has had our community riled up. We need to, we need to do a good job of setting that up so it serves our community well. Maybe there are just simple tweaks that need to be done, maybe there's more that needs to be done, but the issue is, it needs to be done. As hard, as hard a battle that we just went through the last two years with the land use, with the vacation rental issues, we know that there's a lot of unfinished business, even with respect to that activity out there, that we could not address in the vacation rental legislation that was, that we did finally get. But it was also something that we could begin to deal with that industry.
Well put, Mayor, and the comprehensive plan is something that should be looked at most, almost every five years, we're probably 10 years out on it.
Yes, and I do feel that this is, that this committee, that group of names should be appointed for that purpose. That was our understanding when I presented the resolution to this board, that this board passed, since I'm not gonna speak to the town board, but I can speak to the village. We're looking, we're looking to get something done here that will ultimately bring to roost and/or, or will bring to ground some of the things that have just not been getting done out there.
Yeah, we, we talked quite a bit on, about this, Craig, in the, you know, on a daily basis, nothing officially, but, you know, we've gone over the names, and I think, you know, we're pretty much on the same page. And Mike is in the office quite a bit, so we've had good roundhouse discussions about this whole thing, and certainly we all are aware that we need to take a look at this, you know, from all the experiences we've been having just with the STRs. We all know that it's time to take a look at it, and I think it's a good way to start, you know, with the steering committee, and I agree with Mike, if we can save some money for a while here by not bringing professionals in till we get our act together and know where we're going, then it's a, it's a good way to start off. And certainly, I'll bring it up to our board, Janet, to see what the expectations. Maybe we can get some, some things jotted down there and, and written up and compare it with yours, Craig, and then move on.
For the village trustees, is that, does that answer the, the issue?
Yes.
With that said, I would, I would reiterate that from the village board's standpoint as mayor, I, I will appoint the names that were listed, in addition to Liz Clark, whose background, professional planning, I think will be a valuable resource to the community, and one that she's willing to step up and, and work with. I have a motion in support of that, of those appointments.
Someone?
And here, we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, signify aye by raising your hand.
Aye.
And nay by speaking nay. Okay, we have a unanimous conclusion to that, so that's done.
I hope I get a unanimous conclusion on that tomorrow with my board.
Thank you, Joey, I appreciate that a lot. I think we, I, I think what we're seeing here is the, the process in recent months between vacation rentals and all of this, there really has been a, a running conversation between the two boards, and I, I think, I think the two boards are going to wanna stay closely involved with the processes, and I'm sure the steering committee will make sure that we're fully apprised of their deliberations and recommendations. And I, personally, I thank them for their, the individuals for their willingness to serve the community in that capacity. I think it's very important. Moving on on the agenda, I'm going to ask you to act on this tonight, because you're just seeing it, but we have the retainer agreement for our labor council, Brian Kremer, Goldberger and Kremer, it's a law firm and all of these that specializes in labor negotiations. We have, we have a proposal to renew the retainer, which expired the end of December at this point, and you have in front of you the proposed compensation agreements, which are consistent. What I would like to do, disable this and have the administrative committee and Janet have an opportunity to review it and bring their recommendation back to the board.
Motion to table the approval?
Yes. All right, so a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that matter will remain table for further work. We have in front of you, in your packet, a renewal of license agreement between the village and the tenant hockey group. This specifically relates merely a pond hockey event, which is held usually the last weekend in January each winter. This specifically relates Mire Lake Pond Hockey Event, which is held usually the last weekend in January each winter, weather permitting. And some years haven't been so weather permitting, but nevertheless they got to go off. What you have in front of you is a five-year renewal license that would give them permission to promote their Canaan Pond Hockey Tournament, which has become one of the larger pond hockey tournaments in the Northeast. I think each year for the last three or four years, they've been hosting ninety to ninety-six teams. It's a very popular part. And it ties in with other, with other hockey tournament activities that's going to the village. The relationship, to my knowledge, in the years we've been doing this, has been without exception since 2010. I think it brings a nice piece of business to the community on a weekend in January, which is otherwise empty, without much going on. And the only change between this and the expired agreement is that we did note that there was a prohibition against other, certain other competing events on the lake. And we did note the fact that Northwood School for a few years now has been conducting a pond hockey weekend. Actually, the weekend before, it uses the same ice sheets on Mire Lake that Canaan then uses for its much larger event. I am fully supportive of their request for renewal. In fact, I'm happy that they want to renew it, especially after the winter we just had in January this year. Any comments or questions with respect to the agreement?
I have a question. It's for five years. Is part of that agreement, I'm sorry, I didn't read it well enough, that if the weather's not good, they can use the bay?
You have that provision in there, we've never used it.
It is in there. What happens if we give them a five-year contract and after one or two years, we have so many complaints of noise and garbage and what have you up there? We're committed for five years, or what would our ability to get out of the contract be?
I would, I would ask Peter to comment on the conditions of the, of the current ice sheets on Mire Lake when they're finished, since Peter's the host of property.
I mean, they clean up, it's their responsibility, they do a good job. We don't have to babysit them because they do it. Because if they don't, they'll be in trouble, especially Bill Vileman will find them.
We have not had our single complaint about garbage or debris after their event up there. Having, having done many of the opening events at eight o'clock on a Friday morning, sometimes when it was pouring rain, sometimes twenty-five below zero, they have a significant team of people, of their own organization that are there, making sure that everything is conducted properly. It's interesting when you look at the nature and the character of the people. I was quite pleasantly surprised this winter. In some cases, some of these guys back and play pond hockey are, are hits, these size corporations around the country. It's, you know, it's their opportunity to put a pair of skates on and get back on the ice for a weekend. And it seems to work out really well.
I haven't heard any problems as well as you of any cleanliness problems. What would you do though? I don't believe they've ever used Paradox Bay, have they?
No.
And if they do use Paradox Bay and we get a lot of complaints from the village, what are we, what are we committed to for five years?
I think we work with Canaan, they've been very responsive, Art, to any other conditions that have had to be met. In fact, I found them to be exceptionally responsive to just about everything that's been thrown at them.
I want to make one clarification. There is no mention in this agreement of Paradox Bay.
Okay.
That comes up on an annual basis. This agreement does restrict any events from, they have to take place between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM. It does require that they pick up after themselves, no banner signs, posters, et cetera. Advertising beer or wine can be in public display. There was one year, many, many years ago, where the Mire Lake Watershed Committee was a little bit concerned. And that concern was conveyed to Canaan and I've never heard them complain again. I think the fallback of Paradox Bay, although it's been mentioned, it's never been used. We have not ever said that's a great spot. I don't know whether they'd use it. Our only obligation, we said, if they had to use it, is that we would open up, because the plowing, the snowbank that's there. But they are limited in their hours. And if, I'm just reading it here, if they had to use Paradox Bay, we could probably even limit the hours differently. But currently, it's 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Actually, what has happened, Art, and I know you're aware of it. When the ice surfaces on Mire Lake have not been adequate, in the years that I've been involved with it, which goes back to 2010, the backup has been the oval, orders made the oval available in front of the ice. That has, I would say about half the years, they've had to fall back on that a little bit. Although, there's no question that the participants much, much more enjoy the rigs that we've developed in recent years with.
From a practical standpoint too, there are boathouses and docks down there in the bay that have bubblers on and that probably would not be appropriate to think that they could really use that. I don't think it's very practical.
I think, I think that would be an extreme fallback and probably before they would go to that location, they would probably not do the.
I'm happy with what you've said and I'll make a motion to accept Canaan license agreement renewal for five-year term.
Is there a second, Art's motion?
I, um, again.
You're going to say.
I'm glad you're aware of that, Peter, you can kind of step back for a vote.
With that said, we'll call a motion. All those in favor, please.
Aye.
Opposed, and Peter abstains. Thank you all. The next request we have is, as you know, the Lake Placid Marathon generally would be occurring in mid-June, but given the pause program here in New York State and the issues that events are having trying to organize, Greg Borzalieri has proposed, initially he was looking at moving this event to mid-July, but then felt that the chances of that happening might not work out so well. So he just said, you know, I just want to move this to August and go out hopefully, hopefully by August 23rd, they may be able to conduct it. But at this point in time, that's all conjecture, we don't know. But I don't see any reason, move the events committee, I think twice now we've had discussions on that date. And there don't appear to be any objections to his moving to that date of August 23rd. So with the event committee's endorsement of that date, I would, I would ask for a motion recognizing and authorizing that change with the full understanding that that's, that that may still be anybody's best guess. Is there a second?
Okay. Mayor, just to clarify, you're saying that in essence we're reserving the date, but it's contingent on the circumstance in which we find ourselves.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Also Craig, I'm just assuming that Bill Moore has already been involved in this and he approves and can handle his part?
Bill has been involved in at least the last two meetings that I've actually taken part in. There, there, it's a meeting that Roost has been organizing and I think we probably have another one coming up next week. But we're looking at the, we're looking at all of this stuff on almost a week-to-week basis.
Thank you.
It doesn't look at this point like there's, I think the hanging event that we got left in June, and they haven't made the final decision yet, is the horse show itself, whether they're going to conduct that event this year. There's risk for them and there's also budgetary issues in the event that they hosted and it doesn't meet its typical participation. It isn't just, it isn't just spectators in this case. It's the participants that bring their horses here that actually support their budget. So we're meeting, as I said, it's been every two weeks and I believe, I believe there'll be another meeting this coming week, well, where we will continue to communicate with all of the events groups that choose to want guidance. And Bill is an active participant in that. So it's not, it's not, none of this stuff is bright and fuzzy. We're doing the best we can to work with them, to move dates when it's appropriate. As you all know, the Lake Placid Symphony announced this past week that there would not be, this is only the second time in their history in a hundred years, that they have not performed in the summer in Lake Placid. The last time was 1945, when we were in the middle of World War II. So we may, we may be hearing more and I may have more to tell you next week. Could be a very different summer. So I would ask just for a motion in support of the Lake Placid Marathon's request. Jason, Peter, we got it. Who called the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Mindy, you're still with us? Is there anything that you would like to bring up, Mr. Treasurer?
Uh, no, not at this time. I'm all set.
Okay, I would add for Mindy's benefit that the A U D report, I think the last three divisions that were needed have been.
Yes, that will be uploaded.
She's in the process of uploading it to the state, so we will fulfill that requirement. We'll have a copy. Do you think we'll have that copy maybe, Mindy, for our work session next week?
Absolutely.
Thank you for the good work on that.
Hey, Mindy, can I ask, in the ward, there was a check to Town North Elbe for this. Is that for host compliance hour half?
For the short-term rental outside council that enjoys.
Yes.
That's what that was for, okay.
Yeah.
Peter, it's my understanding, the contract with host compliance is between the town and host compliance and that the expectation is that the fees will cover that expense. We have not been asked yet to contribute to that.
Okay, thank you.
Keep our fingers crossed, please cover everything. Anything else, Mindy? Other than that, we'll go to the warrant.
Okay.
We have affidavit eighteen of the current budget here in front of you. As Bill's debate tonight representing 229,890.30 cents. In addition to those, we have $493.75 that represents refunds to customers that are using utility services of the village. Be happy to read the detail, but if you don't need it, I'd be happy to move on and just call a motion. You all have received the detail on the individual bills. And Art did do the review. We have a motion to pay the bills. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any of such? Okay. On the Main Street project, there's not a lot to report tonight. Peter, I don't know if you want to make any comments right now on efforts of your committee?
Just, the hunting yards are being very nice. I think we, the chances are very good we can make a deal with them to make the parking structure slightly larger by using somewhere, by basically swapping land with them. We would take some land from them and they would, we would give them some land. And it's a total of 58 square feet that we would owe them for. So it might just happen.
And I think, I think the last I know, I think Jim Edgecombe was in the process of preparing just the visual as you looked up at it, so you have some idea of what the structure might, might appear as in relationship to the neighboring properties.
Yep, we're all awaiting that.
All I could say is your efforts really have been outstanding in terms of finding a solution that will add roughly 100 spaces and will bring it to 250 parking places if it materializes. And at this point, I think we're all anxious to get to the next step, which would be the actual physical engineering of the structure and the wall so that we can, we can begin to get a estimate of what the cost of that facility might be. And I think it's fair, Peter, you and I have discussed the fact that, in our opinion, this will represent probably the most cost-effective development that we can come up with for that site without a massive structure.
There's very little retaining, there's very little excavation relative to other plans.
So hopefully, hopefully in a few days, we'll have something to share. Moving forward, under mayor items, I just want to comment that we're beginning the process. Mindy has been working with the departments and the budget development for the 2021 year of the village is underway. In the next four weeks, I think Mindy and I, departments and commissioners as they wish, will have opportunities to begin getting a look at it. And we'll roll out more of that as it becomes available. Also would like to note, just for everybody's information, that pursuant to Executive Order 202.26, the governor has postponed and rescheduled all village elections that were scheduled to take place this past March, April, or May and June. And they've been rescheduled to September 15, 2020. With respect to the village, the only election that we had was for the position of village court justice. And we've informed Dave Corson that he's a holdover in office at least until September 15. And of course, he's running unopposed, so hopefully. And he seemed happy and satisfied with that explanation. So just so you're all aware of it, that's what's going on. And a lot of that's, again, due to not being able to have gatherings of people in public places. And then the last item that I need to just comment on is that working with Patty McConvy, as you know, our high school is, our public schools are closed for the duration of the year, school year. I do not know at this point in time what the final configuration of the high school senior class graduation will be. But Patty McConvy has been working with the community in a fundraising effort, has proposed to create street banners for each one of the graduates. So there'll be a picture of the graduate and they will be hung on our main street posts. I've indicated to her that we will do that. I've indicated to her that we will do that without cost, which would normally be assessed in terms of the hanging of these. There are roughly 22 of them. I think some may be hung in Wilmington, which is part of our school district. And the majority of them will be hung here. But I just want you all to be aware of the fact that there's not a lot we can do to help this year's graduating class. And I think we all share along with our families the disappointment that they're not maybe going to be experiencing a traditional high school graduation. But I, I felt the very least we could do was to recognize them in a way that the whole community could somehow participate in that and understand why we're doing it.
The, the, the total cost of the project was raised within two to three hours.
Yes. In, in fact, I think it was just, just a very straw outpouring from our community. I think aside from that, another event that I became aware of over the weekend, I've known about it because I supported it. But Greg Borzalieri went out with a virtual run program. His, his, his initial goal was, was way over-solicited. He's turning to the, I believe, today, mainly to the medical council here in Lake Classic for the food pantry. Approximately $6,500 that he raised from that effort. And also, I think roughly another $1,000 went to another organization in the community. So people are looking for things to do during this rather stressful period that we're all getting through. And I think it's another way of saying that Lake Classic does have heart. I think we are a real community. And I can't think of a better way to demonstrate that community spirit than what people are doing right now, stepping up to help others that have needs that are not necessarily being met from the normal resources. So with that said, I, I, I hope you're all okay with the decision to, to work with Patty on that. I just felt that that was something that we couldn't do. Who knows, maybe it will start a tradition. Commissioner reports. Any reports from anybody tonight? If not, I would just draw your attention to a couple items of correspondence that are in your packet, just a note from the volunteer fire department organization, that once again, they have deferred their annual election of officers, which was scheduled, rescheduled to May 5th for the April, that they're now, I think optimistically, rescheduling it to June 7th, or, I'm sorry, June 2nd, and hoping that that will, will get the job done this time, but we don't know. Again, it depends on things that we haven't heard yet. But as you know, with the fire, with the volunteer fire organization, the often, the members have to be present to vote. Maybe, maybe they're going to have to look at that and come up with a different configuration if this keeps going on. And then finally, the last item you have is just a copy of a news release that the Town of North Elba is releasing, or will release, that they're noticing that they're contracting with host compliance to provide for not only the processing of applications, but also the enforcement of short-term regulations going forward, which in, in, in the view of some of us that have been looking at this for a while, I believe will allow us to move forward with a reasonably solid enforcement effort and allow Mike Gordaselli and his team to, and our police department, to focus on those issues that are violations. Do we have anything else to come before the board, from the trust, from any of you as trustees? If not, I'll invite anybody that might be remaining that wishes to speak to offer your comments or questions.
You may unmute yourself if you wish to speak.
And if there's no one that wishes to speak, Scott, I would be happy to entertain a motion for adjournment.
You're muted, Scott. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second to Scott's motion? Art, seconds?
Third and a fourth.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Who's adjourned? Thank you all.
Thank you all, good night.
Thank you all.
Sticking there.